I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm almost at the flag of the National Park in South Carolina. I got caught on that. I can turn the speaker on now.
Commissioner, before you start, if you don't mind, I've got a meeting at 12:00. I doubt we're here at 12:00, but I've got a meeting. And so, and one other quick comment. You had mentioned yesterday about another meeting of the group that met at Bobby Carlin's. I actually didn't get invited and I had already scheduled a conference call. Commissioner Winters sent me a copy of what you two got, so I won't be there at 3:00.
Okay. And probably have a...
Thanks.
Oh, additions, deletions?
We have three additions and two deletions. The MOU for batters intervention, broadband grant opportunity action consideration, ATV signage action consideration, and deletions of meeting minutes and the OHA Oregon Health Authority Amendment Number Six. We're still waiting for clarification from the state on Amendment Number Six.
And just any public comment, Frank?
Thank you, sir.
No other comments, then we'll go down the agenda. As you know, Frank, we go over most of this in the day before the work session, so we'll probably go through it pretty fast, but if there's any clarifications you need, to catch me on it. First item in the business, Public Health Agreement Amendments. Mental health record, Beth Hadley was in yesterday. She presented that, needs to kind of improve and find a narrative.
Yeah, the first one, Commissioner, was 148017, and it's just bringing in an additional $655. She said she had talked to legal counsel about both of these amendments, but that was coming into the reproductive health program at Public Health.
Yeah, and that was due to some wordage and code of federal regulations, and we got $655 extra. And of course, Public Health needs whatever they can get over there to do an outstanding job.
I'm going to make a motion to approve that, Public Health Services Amendment Number 148017, and a $655 increase.
Oh, second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, please. Interventional service?
She did have two.
Yeah.
She had two amendments. The second one was only for verbiage changes within the specific source agreement, no physical impacts.
That's this one here.
Correct.
Interventional services, MOU slash sex offender and domestic violence. I'll explain what that is to you later, Frank.
Do you want to make a motion on this one first, before I move on?
I'll help you here.
No.
There were two separate ones.
Oh, I was collecting. Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, just the comment that Frank made to me on that particular one has clarified important. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the contract amendment for specific source provider agreement. It's the Medicare Advantage reimbursement schedule of items as presented.
I'll second the motion. Any other discussion on this amendment?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm not saying anything else.
No, but you will.
I'm just ready in case. Mr. Bailey, did all the presenters yesterday sort of jump in where you had told us in the meeting that they had ran all these things by the legal counsel?
That is true.
Yeah.
I checked to see if that little line has been checked or not. Commissioner Winters is usually quite diligent in turning to me and asking if I've reviewed it, so.
Okay. Old Web Grant Agreement Number 216800912589. Commissioner, this one?
I'm sorry, did you want to go back and catch those, the MOU on the sex offender?
Did we have a photo on that? We had a motion on sex.
No, we didn't do any of that. We did the Public Health one, we didn't do Jake's.
Yeah, I'm trying to get through that because you've got other things. So entertain a motion on the Interventional Services MOU.
Okay. Yeah, we have two of them, so I'll do one.
So I'm ahead of myself.
You are, slow down.
This agreement's between Lake County Justice, Community Justice, and Lake District Hospital. Outlines community justice purchases of services, as Jake described yesterday, in the amount of $830 per month, and I will make a motion that we approve that.
Now, second motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then he had on the batters the same agreement with Lake District Hospital in the same amount per month, $830, and I'll make a motion that we approve that.
Oh, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Basically, what that is, when mental health, some of the employees, one of them took another job at the hospital, and what she was doing was this, the sex offender services and the batteries services, because we don't have that person at mental health in Mercy's working at the hospital. We're entering an agreement with the hospital as a basis, so that we can still provide those two services until the mental health gets back up to full staffing. Denise? Can I move this a little closer?
Yeah.
I always think that this is more sensitive than what it is, and noted that it's not. And the Old Web Grant. This pertains to funding the county to serve as a bank or a pass-through service to the Warner Valley Rural Fire Protection Association. And the amount was 15,000, a C, correct? And it's for us to provide to the Rural Fire Protection Association out in Warner Valley, and they use this money for various equipments on their vehicles or personal protective equipment, et cetera, et cetera. It comes through Old Web, but it's to the fire protection, which is part of the Department of Forestry. So, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board grant to the... It's a pass-through in the amount of $15,000. It will be going to support the Warner Valley RFPA.
Was Rick going to be here for it?
He is, so.
Not going down to credible?
Do you want to second that, Commissioner?
No, second. All in favor?
Aye.
They've got four days left. With some timed items. I do believe in deficiency of government, Jim.
Aye, sir.
The credible... This is it.
Two signatures on the bill.
The credible electronic prescription modular agreement. This is in the... The mental health program has electronic medical records for recording, and this is another software module that would go in to address prescriptions and things like that. And there's some negotiation, and it costs a one-time startup fee of $8,000 and a yearly fee of $600.
I'll make a motion that we approve it.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a copy of that for us.
Denise, you said the OHA IGA Number Six was tabled still?
That is correct. We needed some clarification from the state.
Public auction surplus agreement.
This is for our fleet program. This is for the sale of our approved items to be sold this year, being two sand rails, a trailer, Camaro, and an expedition. We've decided to go to do our public auction process on the Internet, and this is the site that we've chosen to go to. That recommendation, just for the record, came from the fleet group that meets once a year. So this is what most counties do use for their, the sale of their vehicles.
Frank, this is, usually when we have surplus vehicles or other items, we just put it out in the newspaper or whatever, sell it to whoever comes. This is just putting it on the Internet, so anybody across the nation, if they want to be on it, they can. It's been a bit of common practice.
I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation to utilize the public surplus website for this year for our surplus property program.
Second motion, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Department of Ag/Wolf Compensation 2016 Grant Agreement. Look, this is, Frank, it's... We have, the State Department of Ag has a program, so that when those wolves that are on the danger species list and so forth, when they start harassing ranchers' livestock or any other adverse actions, we can get a grant from the state to give to the rancher to do deterrent, to try to keep the wolves away from the livestock and so forth. And as Commissioner Winter said yesterday, a lot of this, now a rancher, if they have a cow that died, they usually just leave it or bury it, and a lot of this money would be used to get rid of carcasses, so the wolves don't come in and get accustomed to eating livestock. So it's a small, small grant that is developed to us to provide to the ranchers when they have wolf interactions. And the amount that we receive from the state for this program is $3,000 for this year.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Oregon Department of Ag Wolf Compensation Financial Assistance 2016 Grant Agreement in the amount of $3,000.
Now, second. And it has, Commissioner Winter has the representative, is he going to be gone for one?
He'll be back on Monday.
No, we could, like I said, if that chair were open, we can hold it for him.
Well, it has his name on it, I think is the only thing.
That's why. All in favor?
Aye. So Denise, as Commissioner, yesterday was going down through here. I see we had it on yesterday's agenda, but we didn't show it again. And I think we concluded our resolution 2015-11, you were due to do some follow-up.
I did follow up with the treasurer on that and with the sheriff and Commissioner Winters. And what we determined was that we could take funds from the sheriff's, I believe it's his 215 budget, and then backfill it with monies from the transfer budget. I believe that's 110. The goal was to keep that budget whole, because the funds that are in the communication budget for the sheriff is for future needs for moving to digital. Eventually, we're going to have to change our system to digital, so we can only delete that.
So as written, since we don't have a fresh copy?
We don't, we don't need to do the resolution at all.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I did not get that deleted.
No, it wasn't to delete, it wasn't on here.
Oh, well, now it, okay.
I just had to, I wanted to be sure we had dealt with it.
Okay.
We have the weed spray, the asphalt, and the road advisory. We'll wait for a road master to get here. So we go down to the additions, which is broadband grant opportunity. We discussed that yesterday. There's a, I didn't make aware of a small USDA grant that can be used for feasibility study. And I thought that I presented to some of the other counties is to do a feasibility from, like, eastern Lake County plus Adele, that has Internet deficiencies, southern Horn County, Mahalo County, northern Humbo County, meeting McThurman, and Surprise Valley. But time is really tight. We have to get the application in by June, May 2nd, and I'm waiting to see if any of those counties would like to participate. It's a $26,000 with a $5,000 to another match. If we divide that by five counties, it's about $1,000 a piece to do the grant. Probability of getting the five counties to respond in time for us to apply for that is pretty slim. But it's just something out there. Now, yesterday, we discussed it as either say, let's not bother with it, say it may, or yes, but the contention on waiting for the other counties to respond, and if they don't, then we don't go with it. What to do, we strive to meet that May 2nd deadline. So I'm not sure what else we can act on that today. Any ideas, Commissioner?
Not really. Hopefully, those folks will understand the need to move forward. Was it explained, I read your email that you sent all those folks fairly close, but I'm still not real clear. I mean, I understand the initial step with the grant, but depending upon what comes back from whoever would be the provider of that information that we contracted with, despite counties, where would we go from there? Is there any idea if we'd be able to move forward and do something that actually met the needs of those remote areas and all those counties?
This grant would not actually provide Internet to the...
Right.
It would be an assessment of population distance, what's out there now, like satellite, what megabytes are available, do kind of the demographic and affordability. And then we were talking with US, not USDA, but a potential consultant from yesterday, just to give some ideas. But the purpose of the study would identify what areas, what population density does not have, how to put Internet, and where are the surrounding services that could be extended. And then be up to collectively the counties individually or as a group to help Internet providers through USD grants or NTIA grants, that's National Technology Initiative Administration. But it's mostly just to give base information, of which can be used to solicit grants, loans, funding from the state to go toward providing Internet services to these remote underserved areas. So we're just waiting for the other counties to get back. I left it in their ballpark to, I talked to most of the, a individual of Beach County, but it's for them to go back to their board of directors to get the proper agreement, the consensus, same as what we did yesterday.
Okay.
So not much to act on that today. ATV signage? What's ALC?
A slash C.
A slash C.
Intensive, and that is the one Road Master Rick wanted to be here for. He said it was fine if you moved forward with the weed spray and asphalt decisions, but you felt comfortable.
And Christie's here, so I don't look surprised you're here. Was there anything that Rick wanted us to know in addition? Is he going to be here shortly?
He's, yeah, he should be here in like in 10 minutes.
Okay.
We would probably be able to go ahead and address the weed spray. We've been over that.
Yeah, it's straightforward.
The weed spray is for the county road department spraying noxious weeds along county road right of ways. And we, the road department goes out for a quote, is that, Christie, for us to buy the herbicide and then re-spray?
Yes.
That's our traditional mode of operation.
Yep.
And we have two quotes for the herbicide. One was Mark Hanson at $28,726.05, and River Ellis Compania at $31,778.71. Did Rick make a recommendation on that?
He did, and I will share that. And I will make a motion that we accept the bid from Mark P. Hanson, Crop Production Services Timberline Division, in the amount of $28,726.05.
That was a low bid, about $3,000. All in favor?
Aye.
So said that we can go ahead and address the asphalt? Do they want to wait till Rick gets here?
Yeah, he may have some comment on that.
I think so.
Because there's a split on that, so.
Yeah, I think the road advisory recommendation has been battered around quite a bit. I think we can act on it.
Yeah.
The road advisory, as was mentioned yesterday, had made a recommendation in our last road advisory meeting that we not accept the federal grant for the East Bay project. The road is known as the 28 Road, it accesses the forest, which is the reason it qualified. And I think upon further discussion, it was agreed that we would, Rick would communicate back with the road advisory, that the board and himself believe it is a good project to go forward with. And the ramifications of not accepting that probably are...
Could have first-hand effect in future.
Yeah, grant opportunities, and that's the world we're in with road funding the way it is. So I'm going to make a recommendation that we continue on with our federal grant for the East Bay project.
That's a motion, though, of course?
That's, that's a motion.
Second. What is, but we've got three federal grants this year. Through a program of a federal highway for connecting, for county roads that connects to the forest, like Volpeck Road goes up and into the forest, and the Hardmount Refuge Road goes up and into the refuge, federal lands. And this eBay is, road is in Silver Lake, and it accesses the forest also. So the grants are for the county part of those roads to repay, reconstruct, do whatever, Chip Hill paid. And this particular one, the Road Advisory Committee, the representative for that area, suggested that instead of using our money, there's a match. We get this much money, but we have to put in our own roof money. The recommendation of the Road Advisory was to do away, not accept that grant and use that money on other priority roads. But as a road master checked into pros and cons of dropping that, he recommended that we keep that grant and work on that road in Silver Lake. That's a subject. All in favor?
Aye.
We could make a short break, Commissioner?
We have no meeting announced today, right? I could give you two quick updates, or I can give them to you very slowly.
No, fast.
Phone call from Obama. Could I sit in on that? Yes. The, we've got two eviction procedures that are going forward, one in Christmas Valley, one locally in Lakeview. That's worked through the process. Just letting you know that's ongoing. We filed, and now we're moving toward doing that, working with Darwin. The other is, there's a objection to the property tax imposed on Collins Pine, and so there's an action involving the assessor as well as the Oregon Department of Revenue. And I was on a conference call with the judge regarding that last week when I was in Louisiana. And that has been reset for another meeting on June 15th, another telephone conference for all the parties, to determine exactly what the issues are. The bottom line for the county is that often, Department of Revenue handles all of this, and we just sort of monitor it. But it's possible that the nature of the complaint or the objection by Collins Pine would involve the county being more actively involved in litigation. If that's the case, then while I can supervise that, we'll have to get someone who would associate, associate with us, who is more of a tax expert than I am. So, but June 15th is when we have our next conference, and I'll know more when that happens.
Okay, thank you.
And later, we have one issue for executive session involving litigation.
Okay.
You still agree?
No.
Rick?
Been waiting on him?
Yeah, we took care of the weed quote, but the asphalt, and we also took care of the road advisory.
Okay, and we will grab up some letters and get to the road advisory members.
Yeah, and I'll, personally, I'll speak with them from my point of view, because I get a chance to talk to a couple of folks.
Okay, the asphalt bid that you had at hand yesterday, I think stays the same. I think we're going to be okay. So we went on the CMS2S one to go with Idaho Asphalt, 500 ton, at $430 a ton. They were the only bidder. And then Albina Asphalt, 250 ton for 343. They've never, well, it's been years since they've been to Lake County, so trial error. And then the rest of the CRS2P for 3, for Idaho Asphalt. Idaho Asphalt, Jim's the only company that makes CMS2S, and then they make CRS2Ps, so they're, in their contract, they want all or none. Getting up to it. So taking, I talked to them, I told them it was too much of a span that we would have to give some of this to Albina, and I was able to talk to them that they'd still furnish other products. And maybe help them then not be so bullish and get it closer to us.
So Rick, in your recommendation, are you still going to want to leave the tonnage in there? I thought you talked about...
I do, because I think on the rock crushing, I think I'm going to be able to make it work. So we'll be able to fulfill all these tonnages. You know, to them, they don't have to have something sent to them if you just pass them the money. I mean, the contract says it can work from 100 ton to 1,000 ton, I mean.
Right, and that's what I thought, we'd just leave that out there.
When they reserve it back and stuff, you hate to say, you know, I can't use that when they can save that when their tanks in space. So I try to stay as close as I can when I tell them, so they don't have it all. But we don't really need that in a motion on the tonnage.
Okay, because you, yesterday, did have us cross that out for the timing.
That'd be good.
So you were able to convince Idaho Asphalt to go with provision of adjusted paving oil?
No, there's still the bigger chunks of CRS2P too. And, yeah.
So your recommendation today is?
To go with shared CRS2P with Albina Asphalt and Idaho, and go with Idaho on the CMS2S.
And I'll make a motion that we follow that recommendation of the road master.
Now, second. Any other clarification, please?
Yes, I'm grabbing, if I have, you guys have time?
Well, yeah, we probably need to finish this.
Oh, no, sorry.
On this. All right, aye, aye. Now.
Okay, we'll talk about gravel. So yesterday, setting in here, I kind of had a knowing feeling after talking to the landowner that has the gravel bid, that nobody had contacted them but one person. And then that person, that contractor pulled out at the last minute. Because we got this bid out way too late, and it's a small amount, and it's a hard bid. So we didn't get, we didn't get any bids.
What do you mean, hard bid?
Well, it's, it's real hard rock. It's hard on equipment, too. Everybody's getting a little reputation on it.
But once you get press, it's good.
Also, the fact that this is a federal highway project, and it's a different contract with prevailing wage and all the other beneath the stuff that goes with it. It's just not a simple contract. And Jim Bailey, he's amazing. I got to tell him the story. This here is our federal contract, right here. This is our one rock bid.
That's front and back?
This is the counties that we put out, right here.
This is the federal front and back, two-sided?
Yeah. So anyway, this one here at Salt Trail that we've been using for years, after they put this out through three engineers and got it out, we had to have at least two addendums that they missed the most important part in this thing. But what amazes me, I can send this to Jim Bailey, and he can respond in ten minutes and tell me where the corrections are, and I don't know how that works.
Well, Evan Wood's feet reading course.
Well, and I'm going to add another comment, Mr. Roadmaster, that if you're going to tell stories, and that was the story, former assessor Phil Israel would be very disappointed in you, because that was very quick.
Okay, he's faster.
No, not, no.
We would have been here too. That's what I say, you were very quick, you didn't tell much of a story.
Yeah, I can't do that. You know, the thing is, I mean, that first contract, I mean, he told us parts in it that he'd fixed. And I'm going, you see my tabs, it took me one week to go through it. So I had to.
It wasn't ten minutes.
But I didn't spend that much money.
Yeah. Was it lesser time?
No, it was, it was more than ten minutes. So Rick, with the rock, is there anything today that?
Yes.
Okay.
It's public knowledge now, because everybody got a denim, so.
Okay.
The rock opening was going to be at two o'clock this afternoon. The engineers sent out the stakeholders that got the bid packets. Are you going to bid? And they all said no. So he sent a denim out before we got in to open them, and told everybody that we wanted to go out another week. But we put the crushing from July, the ending of July first to end of July thirty-first. That puts us in August, which is really tight to get it done. But we can still make it work. So two of the stakeholders said that would interest them a lot, that they could probably make it work a bit. So next Wednesday, we're going to know if we can do that. And one might have, I don't, we'll just have to wait till Wednesday. I got one call from Dan. There's a couple things to be aware of. They are aware, the three that was only interested in it, that nobody wants it. So they might come in with some pretty hard figures, too. But we got huge savings on the oil this year on that project, pretty close to a hundred thousand. So it could offset the.
Increase.
Small amount of that rock, too. Because they were trying to hold the oil, I just put, I finally called Federal Highway, and they said, just do it the way you do it, you don't have to do one of these. But there's all that money on the engineering side that they have to come out. And so we did get the oil out and got up to a hundred and twenty-five dollars a ton savings because of the price in arms down this year, so that was good. So going into my next question and asking, since I'm not going to have July to be able to work on this, I need to get the Dog Lake open, and I'm going to talk to Commissioner Shown later to make a home call to the Forest Service. The Dog Lake project is only held up because of the Forest Service right now. They won't sign the permit down here locally.
Really?
Yeah, well Catherine claims she signed it, but they're waiting for the Forest Service to go through it. This has been held up since March seventh through this officer out here.
Permit is for what?
To allow us to work on the roadway and do what they say is our road.
Well, does that fall under mandates, Bailey would, to sign up on that?
Well, Catherine was lead on it, and, and see, they have to have the permit in hand at Federal Highway from the Forest Service to let U N O come down with the kids to do the culture.
Okay.
And so.
So we can ask Catherine directly?
I've been calling Catherine, and she said she had it done last week, but if the Forest Supervisor was in or not, I don't know. But maybe we can get together and try to work on that.
Well, if it's the Forest Supervisor, we can call, comment direct. If we need to call Catherine to ensure.
Check with her, I'll check with her one more time.
Yeah, just ask her specifically who needs to sign it, and we'll go down there and talk to whoever it is.
Because we need to get going.
Yeah.
And once the U N O comes down for their week, I think that's what they're figuring, then they do a report, and then it goes to the SHPO, and they have to, their thirty, least minimum thirty-day revision. So I'm trying to scramble to get that done by July first. If I could, then I want to go out that month, I couldn't do hard, and do pipes and work on Dog Lake. And doing that, I want to buy some rock down here off of Tybalt Hill. There's a pressure there now. And this rock is the only rock that meets federal spec, that fits that job. But I don't have time to put this out and do this. I need, anyone probably looking at a hundred thousand or less. And I need a single source that.
So in a single source, since you're bringing that up, because I talked to you about it yesterday, Mr. Bird, is it, is it more of a federal or state policy on the single source? What Rick was describing to me, you know, when we can get, in this case, a rock material, it has significantly reduced amount, but it exceeds our ten thousand dollar non-competitive, because there, there's nobody that can compete with an individual saying, I've got this amount of rock, I'll send you it, sell you it, rock bottom price. Do we have the authority to change our, for those special occasions, our contract requirements for competitive bids?
Well, it'd be nice to have a blanket, twenty-five thousand or something, because, I mean, the commissioners could be known as easy as email. But we do not have large contracting, rock contracting like the olden days. And you'll see shears are out here at.
Purdue.
Purdue, yeah, new name, out here at Taylor's Pet. And last year, we bought, you know, I'm trying, I'm always trying to fight that ten thousand dollar ceiling, because auditors are really hard on made for the department. And I'm going to have, I'm preparing you guys right now. I've got some eighteen's, fourteen's, and thirteen's, and I probably don't fly. And I explained to Dan that sometimes some of the rules are costly, sir. I mean, I know we have to protect the public, and the public's decided that we've got, it's going the other way.
Rick, as I was sharing with you from my view, you know, I don't think it's as much as an auditor issue as it is a county issue.
Yeah.
As it relates to what our rules are. They merely monitor us following our rules.
They're just a placement.
So that's my question, Mr. Bailey. Can we effectively change those rules for the circumstances that merit it? Because we can easily explain to an auditor why we did it, and it makes sense to them.
No, the rules that we have, we've adopted, and we've placed the limits that we felt were appropriate for going forward. So we can change those.
That was my.
But we've got a rule in place already that allows us to go out for single source contracts without visiting process. So we already have.
And there's no cap on that?
No cap.
Okay.
But what is the criteria?
Our criteria is that the board would have to make a finding, the following findings. Awarding a contract under the exemption is unlikely to encourage favoritism or substantially diminish competition. It will result in substantial cost savings to the county, and the manufacturer seller is the only source of the product of the quality required.
And I think we can make that case in all these situations that Rick talks about, because those things kind of come up, and the opportunity's there. It makes sense, it is a source, there's no one else that can compete for it. They just need to get rid of the rock, they're willing to do it at this reduced price. And I think we document all that, because we just want to say many words appropriate.
Well, one thing you mentioned, Rick, is that if you're referring to for the Dog Lake, has to like and meets the federal specs.
Until somebody proves different.
Yeah. And some of the other pits do not fit.
Right.
That myself is.
Right.
Especially at Federal Highway. If you're talking base rock, it's something you have to do a dirt road. But when you get into asphalt rock or chip seal rock. So what happens, anytime I see a pressure for rock, hazely or something, I'll stop by, because nobody will come and just do chip rock. It's too small, too costly. But if there's a pressure set up, and you know you're going to have to work in that area on those roads, you know, I mean, sometimes when they, they can make it on a byproduct off another belt, and it might only be twelve hundred yards. It might be small, but that's, you know, a hundred and sixty yards into that, I mean, it's a hundred and sixty a mile on chip seal. So it's just, anytime you see a pressure that's in a good pit, that's makes that, you know. I ended up last year buying from everybody. I mean, there wasn't nobody that was left there. So, I mean, I'm, even Jim Fireman would, I mean, I'm real cautious of that, if I can make something fit, you know, to do it. But I'll have a bunch of them over, I mean, I mean, twenty, maybe thirty-three, but last year. So Jim, I mean, you're saying we may need to make findings and have court meeting to do it, too. Is that right? Or at least the afterthought for buying the rock?
Right, right. The findings are not particularly onerous, but you do have to make the findings to have the exemption.
And I guess I could.
And this is, I'm sorry, and this is a board making the findings. So you would come and inform the board, and the board would make the findings, and we could go up with singles.
And sometimes that gets so hard, that we've worked on it, and Christie's coming in and bringing that information into the board.
That's right.
But we'll, we'll just have to work on it better, because last year I did buy some that was over that mark. So I'll probably get highlighted on that.
By the yard.
Oh, yeah. But for today, I do want to, and I don't have the exact amount, I can give you the exact cost. Their quarter tan rock, chip rock is the cheapest that anybody will do in Lake County. I mean, thirteen fifty a yard, if you want to write that down. And then their good base, their quarter minus is nine dollars. And that's, then I have to buy the Davian rocks, those in those baskets for the sheer corners, and also some riprap rock. So you're looking maybe thirteen thousand on quarter tan, and later here in fourteen fifteen. But the three quarter, you know, I can get up towards ninety thousand on it. And then we'll put out another one of these in September for like forty thousand yards.
I'll pay my calendar.
For the big, for big volume, you know.
So Rick, for what you're asking today, it meets the criteria of what Mr. Bailey said.
Well, I have to put it right into you and bring it to you. And if he, he usually gives us, he can send it to me by email, which rule to use, and then we'll, we'll put it right.
Yeah, I would think working with Mr. Bailey, we could get a prototype for how we're going to do this going forward and deal with this one as well, and move forward.
Yeah, the only problem we have right now, we've got Cincinnati's left, but we haven't found our contracting file, so we might have to come up here. If you could, can you just send a copy of it down to us, all the rules making on yours? Or do you have a?
The contract.
Yeah, I have it filed, like in twenty.
Exclusions?
Yeah, yeah.
Just send it over.
Yeah, I can load it right now.
And one question for you. One of the, the certain factors for me is, for the sources, is that they are the only one that has the rocket specs. And that's a federal specification.
Right.
And you have documentation that that's the only pit that meets the federal.
That's the only one. Now, if somebody, it's easy for somebody to say that, well, I need it. Well, two things got to happen. First of all, our engineer's go taste test, he doesn't get to bring a piece of paper to you. They go through there, and they, I mean, I mean, sorry, that's not going to work.
So Rick, when, if I'm following that, if you have a potential rock provider that says, I believe my pit meets specs, wouldn't we just have them provide us with a, a report with an engineer stamp that says that pit meets specs?
Not Federal Highway, they'll come and get the sentence themselves.
Okay, so it's still, isn't it incumbent upon the pit owner to make that happen, not you?
Yeah, he can't just bring a piece of paper to me and says, look at this, this is all.
Yeah, okay.
Because they'll have to go to ODOT.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's not anybody in Lakeview, but in the past history of tails and.
Right.
Back in the old days, people brought paperwork from another pit that's, like, that wasn't quite that bad.
Well, at the end of the day, for you to use the rock, you have to have proof that it meets the criteria. And so the rock owner would have to have that, and the federal inspector would be the one to write it.
And this pressure's crushing right now. It's already got the rock shot, and he's making it. So it's one of those, grab it while you've got it, deal, do, he's there.
And I give the call saving myself, because I have a big mobilization.
So what we'll do on the forty-five, or thirty or thirty-five thousand yards of base rock, you know, there's no way that we'd go to a single source, something that's going to be three hundred thousand. So we'd send this out, and our people in Lakeview are hoping to solve that this, and nobody responded to it. So I don't even know if they want to mess with that, I think are the federal guidelines, but they weren't even one of the three that even was even the seven, so. I mean, it's a heads up, you guys, when you walk around town and stuff, and it's just something that you walk down, you know, I mean, you might get, you know, why are they pulling here, or what are they doing there, you know? I mean, so we need to go through the right mountings to get it, you know, for the reasons.
Well, that comes up. You need to provide some documentation to us, what the Silver Service is, has any essence on that?
No. And Jim, I could bring the, the fence specs, too, and put it in that file as well, I'll do.
Okay. Well, Rick, I mean, I don't get confused here. We're talking about two different things, aren't we? We're talking about this big project that you're going to put out for bid. It's going to have that July one, end of July, this new.
It's still coming through this.
Right, exactly.
As long as I'm not a small amount of this hill, or a small amount.
Right.
Yeah, anything that's large, we're like, we're always going to go through a process. And if we don't have this here, we'll have our little guy here that has more better information than this one.
Yeah, well, you're not using the federal contract on your local, non-federal project.
It's, it's this small stuff that, you know, they're there, and you know, these things are going to take two months to run through.
Yeah.
You can't do that. So, yeah, so this one here, next Wednesday, we'll find out on Heart Mountain. It's going to be through, through the whole deal. And in September, we need to get a base rock one out through the Dog Lake Road, and that'll be another one of these. And it should have some, well, in the fall, it's going to be slow for the contractors. If Jeremy starts on it right now, I mean, those guys, they'll do nothing. I mean, nobody's like Jim Bailey. This guy.
So maybe, here sometime, maybe you can schedule some time in the near future to sit down with Jimmy Hall from the Examiner and face the camera, and you can explain all this stuff, so that our viewers out there can completely understand it.
You did a very good job.
No, I didn't.
I'll make a motion that Commissioner Shown deals the federal connection part.
That's the beauty of only having two of us here, there's, we'll not be a second.
My clear personality, I second it. So whenever you get something to bring forward, so just get it on the pocket, and we'll address it.
Well, we'll bring, we will do the findings and write it, Jim, send that to me, and I'll get that. But, so do you want to, you want me to come to another meeting then, with the findings?
Well, we don't need to.
Well, we don't need to. If you have the findings, you can send them to me. I just send you the rules, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that'll.
This board need to say, yeah, you made on it.
The board makes its own findings. So you could do that on your, your own investigation if you wanted to. But it makes a lot more sense that the department is responsible to act the information. So, but if you, if you find, if you make the findings or the recommendation and give them to me, I can bring them to the board and then you don't need to be here.
You may out there.
So what does that do for you today?
I don't think, I don't think I've heard nothing up there. He's, he's just making rock, but, I mean, there's no payment to be paid or I'm not gonna pull any rock out of there within two or three weeks. So we'll still be fine.
So I'm not gonna suggest that we do this, but I'm just gonna ask the question, if we were to make a motion that said, is the findings turning out to be in line with what's acceptable? Would it prove his purchasing of that?
No, you, okay, that's, there's no point giving that.
Okay. I didn't know about his timing as far as working with this.
Yeah, when's your next meeting?
December.
May 4th.
May 4th.
The third would be the work session?
Is that word?
Yeah, and we'll just have some, Jim, with Jim, I mean, we've done this four, just haven't done it four.
Yeah.
And he'll, he can, I mean, I can work almost every time too. I mean, we have to be here for longest week. First I'll go to the commissioners, let them know what's going on to you and then bring it forward.
Right, there are some of our rules that require you to actually come with the findings and present about this one.
Unless it's a portalized.
Okay.
Okay, just thank you, Rick.
No, I think that's it, I appreciate it.
ATV?
Yeah, the ATV signage. Well, we talked about it just there.
Yeah.
On the tier group.
I think that Commissioner Shown did a good job by seeing the trial there through the dealer first. But, you know, I think he was gonna put the grant towards that.
They wanted to go with the county first, but we have to say so to direct them to the federal now first.
And I also recommend that we do not allow signage on county roads.
Yeah.
And I can do that. Mr. Bailey, does that need to be consensus in a motion?
No, you're not actually taking any action, so you don't need to do anything at all that's on action. Anything else for you?
No, I don't think so. Hit a pretty good project today, so.
Which one?
In fact, we, we will be at the next meeting on the fourth because you, we'll send a deal, you need to send us one for the board that was proposed for the Heart Road. So we'll have to, we'll go next week, but it'll be the next week.
So you have an agenda?
Yeah. And hopefully we'll have our word that it's gonna fit in. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Thanks, Rick. And get back to me if you would, I know you will on the Forest Service signage.
And it's just like Heart Mountain, it's getting close to getting rolled back another year. Man, we gotta get these things done, we gotta get going, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Chris.
That's the agenda we have, leaving it to you in just a second. I do have one question on a subject of yesterday. Subject of EOC, Eastern Oregon County Associates came up. As if there was some proposal to turn it, I don't know of any.
We had one once upon a time.
Oh, that's in 2008, yeah.
No, it was in the last two, it was two years ago when I was in John Day. I mean, they'd asked us several times, but when I was in John Day and actually attended the meeting, they talked about it. And they said, we would love to have Lake County participate even if you aren't a paying dues paying member. So I brought back to us the notion that I felt like we shouldn't pay 10,000, 15,000, any thousand. And that's where we left it, that we weren't going to be dues paying members.
Yeah, I brought it back in 2008 and there was the same discussion. But it ranges from whatever, non-paying to 2,500 to 15,000 to the almost same thing. But our birth agreement was that we wouldn't be. But what they really address, that AOC don't fully address is, he said, issues such as mining and livestock issues and things like that also. So I'd say interacted with them, but we don't get them in. Later update, executive session.
Just one.
Under H.
H.
Which is?
ongoing litigation.
Litigation. I'll have 10:56, we recess from general session and go into executive. The news media, I can't say.